Council will come to order. All rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, service members, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. We honor and acknowledge the Massachusetts, Pennecook, and Pawtucket peoples whose ancestral lands we now call home and on which we gather today. We express gratitude to the indigenous peoples who have cared for this land for generations, predating European colonization and continuing to the present. Moving forward, we are committed to ensuring that the histories, voices, and contributions of indigenous peoples are recognized and respected in the life of our city. The clerk will now call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor McDonald. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Seika. Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafor is not with us tonight. Counselor Taylor. Counselor Winslow. Counselor President Linehan.
Here. Okay, under the provisions of the open meeting law, for those of you in attendance, please be informed that UMA, Urban Media Arts, will be recording this evening's meeting, so just be aware there will be audio and video recordings of this meeting. First order of business. First order of business is public comment. Public comment is allowed under council rules. Each speaker is limited to the subject matter relevant to our evening's agenda, and everyone must keep their comments to two minutes or less. Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Next order of business is the consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda consists of meeting minutes to be approved, one order to be referred to finance, one appointment to be referred to personnel, one communication to be placed on file, and one paper to be referred to the public property committee. Does any counselor have a desire to remove any of these items from the consent agenda for the purpose of further discussion? Okay, seeing one, do I, I mean, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, on a motion by Counselor Condon, seconded by Counselor Winslow. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved. So nice, we don't have anybody remote tonight, we don't have to do a roll call.
Exactly.
Next order of business.
Paper 470-25 Committee Report. The standing committee on rules and ordinance to whom was referred Papers 377 and 407, series of 2025, having considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends Paper 377-25 out favorably as amended by adding the word "and" before "annual." Committee also recommends Paper 407-25 out favorably to the full city council.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. On a motion by Counselor Winslow, seconded by Counselor Taylor, to receive the committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the paper?
Paper 377-25, beat ordained by the Malden City Council, that the code of the city of Malden, 6.08.060 subsection B3 off-site parking facilities, is hereby amended by adding an annual between nonrefundable and application, and by striking $100 per vehicle and inserting the following: $200, a base fee of $100 for the first nine parking spaces, and $20 for each additional parking space over nine. We also have Paper 407-25, beat ordained by the Malden City Council, that the code of the city of Malden, 6.08.100 subsection A to B, used cars dealers, is hereby amended by striking in its entirety and inserting the following in its place: A release signed by the applicant authorizing city personnel to access the applicant's criminal record.
Okay, Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, I'll also ask Counselor Seika to speak, because these papers went through licensing committee as well. But, so, we, last week in Rules and Ordinance Committee, we discussed these papers. The building inspector Nelson Miller was there to also talk about his input on these. So, the first paper really relates to, as you recall, we have had our fees related to off-site parking facilities challenged, and the court ruled that, that the fees that appeared to be excessive, and so we have had to, we had legal office review those, as well as the building inspector, make recommendations that first went to license. The license recommended the language, and it came to rules and ordinance. We only had a small, kind of typo to fix, so otherwise, we made a favorable recommendation for this paper, as did the licensing committee. I don't know if Counselor Seika wants to add to that at all. Thank you.
Do you want to talk about the next one, too? Are we doing this together?
Let's just do, we're gonna do it one at a time.
Oh, doing separate. One at a time.
Yeah, it's separate.
Okay, sure. So, yes, the license committee met a few weeks back, and we voted unanimously to send this to ordinance, so we could update our city ordinances. It, like Counselor Winslow said, it was due to the fact, the recommendation from our city solicitor's office for both of these papers, that we update our ordinances and change the way that we've been handling these two particular items. So, the license committee was in full support and recommended these favorably. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Seika. I have a light from Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say that, you know, looking at both of these papers, I think this is a, both papers are terrific papers. I think, I like the fee structure for the first paper, 377-25, and 407-25, I think is long overdue, and I think you did a great job by implementing this in place, because, you know, people that are selling, like, used cars and have liquor licenses and stuff should be bonded, and therefore should have a query background check, because you're gonna be careful of, you know, the people that you're giving licenses to, especially at those degrees. So, I think that's great, and I'm in full support of these papers. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Seika, did you want to respond to that?
Really quickly. Counselor Simonelli, we implemented the query a few years back, but the applicant has been providing us with a copy of their own query.
Yeah.
We've been told that that's not how it should be.
Correct.
So, now, they are gonna sign a form, and the city clerk's office is going to handle the queries themselves. So, that's the, just, so there's no confusion, people. We've already been doing this since we, I did the moratorium on the Class II Daleys a few years back. It's probably longer than a few years at this point.
I remember that.
Time's flying when you have it fun. But, yes, it's just the way we do it.
I think it's more accountability that way now, yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. And Counselor Winslow, did you want to also respond?
Yeah, no, I just want to give, on the open-air parking lot fees, just a little explanation of what's happening. Right now, we basically had, for open-air, or off-site parking, a per-space fee. So, the structure now is to basically have an annual licensing fee, and then a $100 fee for the first nine spaces, and then tier it down for $20 over that. And, you know, Building Inspector Miller thought that was consistent with what other cities were doing, and sort of also consistent with the compliance and enforcement efforts we have to make. And Solicitor McNeil agreed that that should be legally sufficient to support these as fees and not excessive fees. So, I would make a recommendation to enroll this, that ordinance, as with that amendment.
Question from Counselor O'Malley, I want to take first.
Yeah, which paper are we discussing right now?
377-25.
Yeah, this, three, the one on...
Not 407.
Yeah, not, you know, 37, 37, making a motion to enroll 377-25.
Well, it looks like we need a motion to amend first.
Okay, so, make a motion to amend that 377-25, is that, we just need to add "and" in front of "annual" as in part of the original paper, because there was, just to make it grammatically correct, so that was just a, so, yeah, so.
Okay, so we have a motion by Counselor Winslow, seconded by Counselor Seika, to amend, adding the word "and" before "annual." All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that motion carries, and then...
Then make a motion to enroll, per the recommendation of the committees.
Now, the roll call? Right? You roll? Roll.
Just need a second.
Okay, so, a motion by Counselor Winslow. Counselor Seika, do you also want to second that?
Sure, thanks.
Okay. Motion to enroll, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Yeah.
Counselor O'Malley, you didn't have any further questions on that? Okay, so, we'll next take up 407-25, and we have no amendments on that, correct?
Yeah, no amendments. And as Counselor Seika explained, this was really another technical correction to our ordinance, if we had required a query check of the dealers. And some of the tradition there was that, you know, in the past, especially used car dealers, there's always the concern that there might be, you know, some fraudulent activities, you know, back in the days where there were a lot of car thefts and stuff like that, so it was really important that we had that information. And, but the procedure, the correct procedure is to have the person sign a waiver allowing the city to get that information, and we get the query rather than them providing it. And it also provides a little bit better of confidentiality into that, because, you know, there might be things on that query that are long gone or whatever. So, it, that was the, you know, the solicitor's office recommended that change, that we go from requiring a query be submitted with the license, to having the person sign a waiver allowing us to get that information. So, I don't know if Counselor Seika has anything else, but that's the gist, otherwise, I'd just make a motion to enroll.
Okay, and Counselor McDonald has rightly pointed out that, as I did last week, I did not reiterate that we just successfully moved to enroll Paper 377-25. So, I don't want to skip that step. Counselor O'Malley, do you have a question before we make that, take that motion up?
On 407-25, yes, so, make a motion.
Correct. What, what were you saying about the other?
I was saying that I didn't, that I didn't affirmatively state that the motion carried to enroll the previous paper, so I was just restating that.
Understood. Yeah, okay, so, my question is more procedural. So, on 407-25, who's the sponsor? There's no sponsor listed?
Yeah, I made a note here to add a sponsor. It should say JD Seika. It came out of the license committee, referred over to ordinance.
Okay, thank you. The only reason I ask is because I know that we made a big deal about, at the end of our, on our table papers, 278-25, not having a sponsor, and we, there was a huge amount of discussion, that was the short-term rental, and so I just want to make sure that we're being consistent. I, in committee, voted present, and the reason being is, it was discovered in committee that currently, the city clerk is using their discretion to filter out applicants based on the query checks, and that's not being sent to the license committee. And so, I think that prior to me participating in changing the ordinance, I want to really review the procedure to make sure that, you know, all applicants are getting a fair shot at getting a license. So, I will just vote present tonight. It's not because I don't just agree, I don't agree with the change, it's just I think that we need to look at the procedure prior to changing the ordinance. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Just one, one second, Counselor Simonelli.
It's not under my judgment, it's under the ordinance that we...
I agree.
It's 6.08.110...
Do we, I want to get clarity on that, to respond to that before I take Counselor Simonelli. Is that what you're gonna speak to?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna take Counselor Seika, just to respond for, to clarify Counselor O'Malley's question.
So, really quickly, it's not Carol Anne or anybody in her office's decision as to who gets moved forward and who does not. We actually have this, it's as part as our city ordinance, that, I'm gonna read it. 6.08.110 F2 states, "The city council may deny a license without a hearing to any applicant who has a criminal proceeding pending, has been convicted of or has admitted to sufficient facts in a nonviolent felony within one year of the date of the application, has been convicted of or has admitted to sufficient facts in a violent felony within three years of the date of the application, has been convicted of or has admitted to sufficient facts in an alcohol or drug-related misdemeanor within one year of the date of application, provided that no person shall be granted a license within three years of conviction or admission of sufficient facts in alcohol or drug-related misdemeanor, which is a second offense, has been convicted of or has admitted to sufficient facts in three or more drug or alcohol-related offenses within 10 years of the date of the application, has been convicted of..." You lost me. "...has been convicted of or has admitted to sufficient facts in an alcohol or drug-related felony within three years of the date of the application, has been released from incarceration in a correctional facility within one year of the date of application, is included on or has been removed from the Massachusetts sex offender registry within two years of the date of application, has been determined responsible for three or more motor vehicle accidents within two years of the date of this application." And this is not just on Class II Daley's license, we actually follow these rules for anybody who, so, in license, taxi cab drivers, livery, anybody that our license committee issues a license to, we've been adhering to this ordinance for, I think, as long as I've been a city councilor, which has been about 12 years. The Class II Daleys are fairly new. I think maybe 2019, 2020 is when I asked for us to take a pause, because at one point, Class II Daleys were out of control. We were known as the easy city to come and get a Class II Daley's license from, so, and you didn't need a query for years when I was on the council. So, this is just the last few years, and this paper is just addressing the fact that we asked the applicant to provide the query instead of us running it, but this is no different than, you know, me volunteering at the school and having to sign a release so the city of Malden could do a query check on me so I could be in the school with my kids. So, I just want to go on record in saying, it's not Carol Anne or her office, it's actually, we have followed this ordinance for all of these types of license.
Can I just respond?
Okay, I'm gonna let Counselor O'Malley quickly respond, and then I'm gonna go to Counselor Simonelli.
And I appreciate that, it's just the words that you, that you just read to us said that the city council shall, or the city council may. So, it doesn't say the city clerk may. So, what I'm saying is, the filtering and the vetting by ordinance has to happen by the city council, not the city clerk, and I just want to make sure that everyone's getting a fair shot at that. Thank you.
Yep, okay, Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I just want to say that, my, from 2008 to 2000, from 2000, 1998 to 2008, I was the licensed chair for like 10 years. So, it, the procedure was to do a query background check, which we're getting back to. Let me, let me ask you, does anyone up here know how to read a BOP, a Board of Probation? Do you know how to read it? Know what it means? If it's an open case, closed case, there's all kinds of different nouns and phrases in there that people don't understand, and just letters and stuff like that and everything else. So, here's the thing, today, it's so easy to go and make your own query. You can just have your friend do it, that's, you know, so if the city, if the city clerk's on it, which is an automatic extension of the license committee and of the, procedurally, on the city council. So, they, they read, the chairperson reads the BOP, too, and knows, like, when that person's coming in for a license, especially a cab license, say, hey, look, go clear that open case up, you know, it's been dismissed, but, you know, we need you to get an updated BOP, or we'll get it ourselves. And we, compliance of two ex-police officers that know how to read the BOP front and backwards. So, you gotta have the consistency, because if the city clerk is actually excluding those individuals that have a felony record and that have done some dirty deeds, which we all have it sometimes, but, I mean, you know, that's the penalty of getting caught and getting a felony, man, you can't, you can't have those licenses. So, if you're doing that, you're doing a good job. So, I think the clerk's doing a good job with that. So, I think that procedurally, we have to, like, continue to move forward and have as much guidance as we can from compliance, from the clerk's office, and from legal, on reading the BOP. I know a lot of attorneys that can't read BOPs. So, that's the procedure.
And, and I, I am reading the ordinance, and maybe Counselor O'Malley, we do look at that and we change it from the city council to the city clerk's office, because, to be honest with you, I'm probably not gonna be comfortable with, say, let's say, a taxi cab driver, for instance, who has a pending criminal charge on their query, to even have to come in and explain themselves. I think not even accepting the application is the easiest and the less humiliating for both. So, we don't have to bring them in, they're not on TV, they don't have to sit here and tell us why, you know, they have a pending charge against them. I would prefer not even to have to deal with that. So, maybe we just look at, you know, in the future, let's do this, but in the future, let's look into maybe changing the wording of that particular ordinance. I can create a paper for it when we come back from the holiday.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Seika. Oh, Ally, did you want to come speak to it? Thank you, yeah, I noticed that, thank you.
I just want to talk about the query policy. There is a policy that we had to develop for the city, and part of the policy is that if there is adverse decisions taken based on the query, that the person has to have an opportunity to dispute the accuracy of the query policy. So, I don't think the query policy can just go to the clerk's office, and the clerk's office says, well, this person has an open charge, or open complaint on their query, and then say, this person's not eligible to go forward with licensing. That person, maybe queries are wrong often. I, I do know how to read a query, and oftentimes, the queries are wrong, so we can't just take it in and say, oh, this is an open charge, and then say, this person's not eligible to be moved forward.
Okay, yep, Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you. Usually, when that happens, and I'll defer to the current chair of the license committee, but usually, when that happens, you give that person, that person will be screaming bloody murder, and saying, look at, that's, it's closed, I'm telling you, it was dismissed, and you give them that opportunity, you say, okay, well, listen, you gotta go to the courthouse and get a new, new query stamped by the clerk, and bring it back to us to follow a meeting that we, the committee meeting that we have. And you just kind of hold the license back until they come with it, so a good faith type, type of thing, and it really seemed to work out well. So, you know, I would still, I'd rather have the license in freeze. I mean, I don't know what the due process is, as far as, like, we're concerned, to not give them, not have them be eligible, because they've got a, I'll give you a prime example. If, if somebody's going to get a cabbie license, and they've got three drunken driving charges on their, on their BOP, and one of them's just showing open still, but it was closed three years ago, we're not gonna give him a license to drive a cab, right? But, we're gonna also say, because we know that, like, that person's really trying to get back on their feet, and everybody has problems, right? So, we say, hey, look, you know, go get it straightened out, get it timestamped from the clerk's office, bring us back a brand-new BOP, and it'll show closed. Instead of the open, it'll be a C. You're all set, right? And that's, so that's how we've been doing it since I ever been on the council, since Paul Congdon taught me how to do it. So, I mean, I used to read the query for the committee, and, you know, again, but you have the compliance guys there as well. But usually, if somebody's putting in an application and you deny them on the basis of their query, and show them, and say, hey, look, you know, you've got an open case, you know, you gotta, you know, continue without a filing, oh, I brought it back to court. So, you say, all right, give them that opportunity to go, go, go get it fixed, bring it back.
By law, I will just respond to that, if I may, Madam...
Yes, please, thank you.
So, by law, talking about queries, it can be an incident if you have three people named John Doe, and the query for John Doe 1 is on the query for John Doe 2, just automatically not allowing that person to give, to be provided a license, we can't do that. We have to give them an opportunity to dispute that the query is incorrect.
Which I think I said that.
Okay. Yeah, Counselor Seika.
I apologize, I'll be brief, but really quickly. So, Alicia, this paper is, came before license because you had recommended that we change this. Does this have anything to do with currently how we're handling things? And if, like, this paper needs to be enrolled tonight, and then we can discuss how we handle it in the future.
That's correct.
Like, one has nothing to do with the other at this point.
That's correct.
So, I would move that we enroll this ordinance, and then we can have a conversation at a later date about possibly addressing the other issues we may have with how we move forward for granting licenses in the future.
Okay, and that's fine, I do know Counselor McDonald has been waiting to speak on the paper, so I'm gonna have Counselor McDonald speak, and then we can take up the motion.
Yeah, I agree that, just as a point of order, it's time to take a vote on this, so, I, I thank you for that, Counselor Seika. So, procedurally, will this work be in the way that, because you'll be doing the query reports, I guess is a question to the clerk, you'll be running the, and we pay for the query? We'll pay for the, do we have to pay for queries?
We have a program.
Okay. So, we, so that's not a marginal cost, but, so if you, if you then come up with something under this, if it uncovers something that hits one of these standards, under the city's policy, will you then call them up and say, we found this, and give them a chance to dispute it? Is that how that would work?
So, we do, this, first of all, I'd like to say, this doesn't happen very often. We don't have, it's very rare for a petitioner to come forward and have open cases on their query report. But, the person is given a chance to, as Counselor Simonelli said, come and bring the right documentation to show if it was a mistake, if it wasn't a mistake, and discuss it. So, I think moving forward, and we discussed this in ordinance last week, that there will be a policy, which will include entering into executive session every time we have somebody who has anything questionable on their query report. So, what we said in ordinance last week was kind of what happened in the past, doesn't matter anymore, because we all agreed that the solicitor's office was gonna present us with a new policy moving forward, so, and as I said, part of that would mean entering into executive session. If you, as a body, don't want my office screening out queries that are open and blatantly against the ordinance, then we could put them all on the license agenda, license would have to go into executive session with every meeting, and then, when that paper comes out on the floor, whether it's recommended favorably or unfavorably, the city council would then also have to go into executive dis, executive session to discuss what's gonna happen with that, at that point.
Well, I, that is helpful, and I think that we, I think Counselor O'Malley is right that the way this is written, it says the city council may, not city council shall, so, it would probably be helpful to have some, some discussion about, like, is there a situation where we would not want to deny a license based on any of these, or is it kind of a standing directive? So, I agree that that would be something we talk about in the future, and I just want to state on the record, I don't think it's right, like, morally, that we say, if you've been released from incarceration within a year, you can't apply for a license, because that means you served your time. And there's a whole campaign called Ban the Box, which says that you can't just say, if you have a concluded criminal record, you are screened out from hiring, because it makes it very difficult for people to rehabilitate their lives when they have served their time. So, I do think there are some pieces to this ordinance and this practice on that side of it to clean up, and I also 110% agree, we gotta clean this up right now, as proposed in the paper. So, I'm happy to second Counselor Seika's motion, if you need a second. Do you need a second?
Yes, I think we do, and it sounds like there's a new paper forthcoming, so maybe we have appetite to work on that.
Probably will be.
Okay, so we have a motion from Counselor Seika, seconded by Counselor McDonald, to enroll. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is enrolled. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor O'Malley. Okay, thank you all for the robust discussion. Next order of business. Okay, does anybody have personal privilege? Okay, Counselor Simonelli.
Quick tonight, quick tonight. Thank you, Madam President, I appreciate it. So, I just want to just say, I want to congratulate the chief in the Malden Police Department, along with the neighborhood. We, last week, or maybe two weeks ago, we had some car break-ins on Bryant Street, they broke into a few cars there, and they apprehended them very quickly, within a week, working with the community, and, so I just want to say, you know, if you're coming down to cause problems down in Ward 7, it's not gonna work out well for you. That's all I can tell you. So, keep it clean. The other thing is, I have, just want to say that, couple of events, I got lined up here, let me see, hold on, bear with me. All right, I got Suffolk Manor Holiday Party, we're gonna do it on a Friday, December 19th, from 6 to 8. Everybody's invited, we're having Chinese food, drinks, and desserts. Santa will be there, Dancing Santa, he's actually a DJ and a Santa, so it should be a good time down there, and, you know, everybody's welcome to come on down and enjoy the seniors and watch them shake and move. The other thing is, you know, my neighborhood particularly, you know, usually when I do community events, holiday time, you know, we've got New Orleans Street, Bowdoin, the rest of the neighborhood, and, so, every year, we used to do like a toy drive and do some things down there. So, this year, I said I'm gonna do something different and not try and reinvent the wheel. So, this is for the Ward 7 folks. I have teamed up with Counselor Seika and Counselor Spatafor for their public safety toy drive that they do, so I figured, why reinvent the wheel? So, anybody from Ward 7 can, you can call me, you can call JD, you can, you know, go by the police station... Quick tonight, thank you, Madam President, I appreciate it, so I just want to just say, I want to congratulate the chief in the Malden Police Department, along with the neighborhood, we, last week, or maybe two weeks ago, we had some car break-ins on Bryant Street, they broke into a few cars there, and they apprehended them very quickly, within a week, working with the community, and, so I just want to say, you know, if you're coming down to cause problems down in Ward Seven, it's not going to work out well for you, that's all I can tell you, so, keep it clean, the other thing is, I have, just want to say that, a couple of events, I got lined up here, let me see, yeah, hold on, bear with me, all right, I got Suffolk Manor Holiday Party, we're going to do it on a Friday, December nineteenth, from six to eight, everybody's invited, we're having Chinese food, drinks and desserts, Santa will be there, Dancing Santa, he's actually a DJ and a Santa, so it should be a good time down there, and, you know, everybody's welcome to come on down and enjoy the seniors and watch them shake and move, the other thing is, you know, my neighborhood particularly, you know, usually when I do community events, holiday time, you know, we've got Newland Street, Bowden, the rest of the neighborhood, and, so, every year we used to do like a toy drive and do some things down there, so this year, I said I'm going to do something different and not try and reinvent the wheel, so this is for the Ward Seven folks, I have teamed up with Councilor Seika, and Councilor Spatafora for their public safety toy drive that they do, so I figured, why reinvent the wheel, so anybody from Ward Seven can, you can call me, you can call JD, you can, you know, go by the police station, I know Mary Malden is doing something too, with Local Twenty-two, is my right, you guys still combined with them, and you guys do a great job, and, so, but you guys are not taking anybody right now, you guys are full.
Um, yeah, we're very blessed to be fully sponsored this year, but thank you for the shout-out.
Yeah, no worries, I'm going to make sure that Chuck sends you a donation as well for what you guys do. So, I figured that I would just donate this year to the entities that are doing the job, you know, instead of trying to reinvent the wheel, because it's tough to run all these parties, so I figured I'd concentrate on the seniors, so that's what I'm going to do, but I'm going to defer to Councilor Seika, because it's her, you know, without, without her being the tip of the spear there, there would be no program over there, I don't think, so I just want to congratulate her on a job well done, that she does, and I just want to say that, you know, I'm glad that you included my neighborhood into this thing, so, Councilor Seika, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Semenelli, Councilor Seika.
Thank you, Council President, so, yes, I had, we have a wonderful team that we do this public safety day toy drive with, the fire department participates, the police department participates, Detective Renee Kelly is amazing, she handles this whole list, if anybody is still in need of toys for this Christmas or this holiday season, they can reach out to her, and, don't laugh, but her email address is ahkelly, K E L L E Y at maldenpd.com, no relation to the other ahkelly. She is the one that handles the list, no one, no one sees these children's names, not even myself, we try to keep it as private as possible, because we don't want anybody, you know, to not want to sign up for that reason, that's why Detective Kelly is the one that's in charge of it, we, this year, will be passing out the toys to the families on next Wednesday, the seventeenth, so if you are in need, please reach out to her sooner rather than later, so we can make sure that your child gets a bag of toys for next Wednesday, the wonderful members of the Malden Police Department, we have one back there, who, they go around on next Wednesday, some bring their kids, some bring their wives, it's kind of like, it's a wonderful, if you show up and you see the, the work in action, it's a, we have like a little mini Santa's Village type of a thing, who's coming in with Santa's hats, and I've gotten to meet the kids over the years and see them grow every Christmas, we fill up bags based on, you know, Renee writes little envelopes, asks the parents, you know, what their child's into, how old they are, type of a thing, so it'll say, boy, age three, and I like Paw Patrol and Bluey, whatever that thing's name is, Blue, I don't think it's Blue's Clues anymore, it's Bluey, Blue's Clues was when my children were little, but, it really is an amazing sight to see, we have a ton of people that volunteer for community service hours, so, again, if you need some help this holiday season, you can reach out to Detective Renee Kelly at the Malden Police Department, if you are able to donate, we are still looking for toys, you can drop them off at the police station or the central fire station, there's boxes at both locations, or we have an Amazon wishlist on Facebook that you can, can just click and purchase, and the toys get automatically sent to Renee at the police department, so, thank you. And, anybody from Ward Seven, Councilor Semenelli has helped us this year, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Seika, Councilor O'Malley.
I just wanted to congratulate and thank the Friends of the Malden Public Library and the Malden Historical Society for holding their annual winter concert this past Sunday, it was very well-attended, it was great, it was held in the historic wing of the library, in the Rider Gallery, the acoustics were amazing, and the performance by Mystic Side Opera Company was just like, it was really moving, Councilor Winslow was there, there were some members of the public, it was really a great opportunity, and I appreciate that the library is increasingly opening up the historic wing so that we can all enjoy our public library, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor O'Malley, Councilor Taylor.
Thank you, just a couple of announcements, tomorrow evening, Zanta will be in City Hall doing the silent witness, giving voice back to domestic violence victims at six thirty PM, so I invite anybody who can come tomorrow night and stand with us and hear their stories, to do so, so six thirty tomorrow night, right, in City Hall, and then, this weekend, Santa will be back at Pine Banks on December thirteenth, he does have a new location over by the Fields, but starting at one PM on December thirteenth, you can join Santa and Mrs. Claus until four thirty, they'll be in the, in the barn, near, near the baseball field, and hoping to see everyone there.
Great, thank you, Councilor Taylor, Councilor McDonald.
Thank you, Council President, I want to just let folks know who are watching, that our finance committee met earlier today, and, just before this meeting, and did vote out a recommendation back to the full council around our Proposition Two and a Half tax override, and so that is going to, I think, be on our city council agenda next week, we've had a lot of public discussion about this, and want to encourage folks, again, to submit your comments and suggestions about this, the finance committee voted to add an additional step based on required, legally required school spending, that we will be talking about in the full council next week, so just wanted to remind folks that, this is, we're honing in on a vote on whether to put this on the ballot, and this is kind of a final opportunity before we do that, to send in your comments, to contact your city councilor, and offer your input into that, and just want to have, want to say a big thank you to, especially our mayor, who has been at every single one of these finance meetings, and his team, his finance team, who have, who have gone through so many different discussions and questions and data points, to try to arrive at a place that is really transparent, and is asking for, what we really have good information to, to be clear with our voters about what the, what the ask is and why, and the potential, and the potential risk if it doesn't pass, so, stay tuned for more of that next week, and just wanted to say thank you to everyone, including my, especially my colleagues, for your really good participation in this finance committee process, and I'm really proud of where we've landed, thank you, everybody.
Great, thank you, Councilor McDonald, Councilor Winslow.
Yeah, I know it's going to be busy Saturday, at eleven o'clock, the Friends of Malden Public Library is having their annual book sale, so you can go down there, and then, from twelve to three, the Greater Malden Asian American Community Coalition is having their open house and barbecue that they had to delay for weather reasons down on Pearl Street, the facility down there, and then also, I believe, just tentatively, the City menorah lighting's scheduled for December twenty-first, which is a Sunday at five PM, I think it's, you know, later in Hanukkah, but it's, that's the plan, yeah, I think here, so, but, yeah, I guess we'll probably have more information about that before next meeting, but just wanted to make sure people have that on their calendar, thank you, great.
Well, that's great, thank you. Okay, seeing no other lights, do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, motion by Councilor O'Malley, seconded by Councilor Semenelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.